All right, we'll go. Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Hopkins, the podium jurors.
Good morning. I want to remember Leota King today. Her prayers. She's recovering from hip surgery. She wanted to be a real hippie, I guess, so that's one way to do it. Please join me. Good morning, Father. We thank you for the shelter that we stand in today to protect us from the elements. Thank you for those that are here that are representing different situations and organizations. Bless their time together. Give them wisdom from on high. Help us to bring a better quality to our community and county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll begin this morning's meeting with a pledge upon the police grounds.
A pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll welcome everyone here this morning. As Mr. Hopkins did speak of Leota, for those that didn't, don't realize, Leota took a fall and she's in recovery with a hip fracture. So she's doing well. I talked to her last night and she's up and doing rehab now, so hopefully she'll be back here soon. Probably be in a wheelchair, but she'll be back soon. We'll go ahead and get started this morning. Is there a motion for minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that. Is there any questions or discussions? All in favor, second to nothing.
Two ayes.
Department heads. Richard?
Morning, guys.
Morning, Richard.
We had a busy night, Sunday. We worked up about 1:30 Monday morning. Had a few roads we had to close and get some gray off the road from the rain and the rains we had. We probably had three or four gravel roads that took the blunt of it up around Posey Township. We'll have most of those done this morning with the grader. We're out of Waterloo today picking up all the stalks, bean stalks, corn stalks, the stuff that's piled up on the sides of the roads. We just got it open yesterday for everybody to get through it. The gentleman down on Sane, we took care of him, talked to him and everything, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other than that, we started getting into cutting trees last week. Mother Nature, she kind of controls us, so. Get back into cutting trees and then before long we're gonna start hitting it hard on Berman again. If we're in the home, we'll be fishing snow. Hopefully not, but is what it is.
Richard, could you kind of coordinate things with Warren? I was hoping he'd be here this morning.
I was too.
I had a call on Mud Creek up there by Gordon Estates or behind Gordon Estates. I guess what part of that creek that lies on the airport, they maintain it and keep it clean and are, as opposed to. But the rest of the creek, there was a question of whether the county could maintain that or not, and I said, "Well, it depends on whether it's private property or public property." Do you know, and if not, could you check with Warren to?
I'll probably have to get with Warren because I'm not familiar with it really at all, but I'll find out.
Okay.
I mean, what's it needing, just kind of dipped out?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
It flooded over the weekend, too.
Yeah.
I mean.
I think it got a total of four inches up around Posey.
Yeah, we did. Okay. All right. Are you able to stick around?
Yeah, for a little bit. Angie's gone, so.
All right. Because I've got some other things I wanted to run past you.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
I'll be here.
But that doesn't need you to be through the meeting.
Okay.
So, any questions for, any other questions for Richard?
No.
Anyone else in the audience might have a question for Richard or in the highway department? All right. Thanks, Richard. I don't see Bill, Gray. Sheriff, do you have something for us this morning?
Not so much something. I was checking on the medical contract to see if you guys were gonna vote on that today or?
Um, I think.
I just got the copy from the board today.
Okay.
So, if you guys want to vote pending my approval, but otherwise we can do it next meeting.
Okay. The only other thing that I had that come out in my reading was there was a paragraph that any, any other savings that they could exclude, they would share it with the county, but there's not a percentage in there.
Okay. I'll ask Lisa and get back with you today.
Okay. Because I really think there ought to be a number in there.
Okay.
In that contract.
I will ask her.
Can you vote on that pending our board's approval and changes made in it?
I think so.
So I'll move to accept that contract with the approval or void?
I'll second it as well. Been a motion made and properly seconded that we approve the contract pending our attorney's approval. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes. Colin, could you also, that, once you get down to that paragraph, could you, with the person, or?
The saving sharing.
Yeah, the saving sharing. Could you make sure that through Joey, that there's some kind of number put in there?
And also, Colin and I have been working on the contract for the deputy as well.
He mentioned that to me, so.
And one last thing. I'd like to, if at all possible, I know the budget's not finalized and would not be making a purchase, but with your guys' permission, since they're your vehicles, to begin exploring some ideas for our vehicles for next year. When we order them in January, we usually don't get them to March or April, and we have one that's not doing so good, so if we could begin kind of exploring what we're going to do with that, maybe I can come back next meeting or next month with an idea of how we want to move forward and pending your guys' approval.
All right. While we're talking about vehicles, Joey, you and I briefly talked the other day on the phone about inventories.
Yes.
You said that if we were to prepare for a county auction.
Yes.
You have some.
Yeah, seized vehicles. We're still working with the BMV to get titles for, and we also have a few older Durangos that probably could be in there.
Departmental.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Could you, do you know when you'll have those available, the seized vehicles? I mean.
I thought it would be, I thought it would be a few months ago and we've had, anybody that's dealt with the BMV knows how that goes, and this is a different thing for us. We've never had where we've auctioned any off, at least that I've been a part of, so. Yeah, I'll contact you guys and get an inventory of what we want to try to get rid of and what we have to get rid of, so.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Sorry about my. If we can start establishing an inventory, that way we know.
Okay.
Whether we need to, you know, have an auction or have open bids or, you know, whatever.
Sounds good. And sorry about my appearance. We're doing the No Shave November, so.
What?
I don't think I'm gonna get, I'm not gonna get to where Mark is, but.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right. Michael?
Gave you my report there. I don't really have anything to get approved, but as far as phone calls, we had actually less phone calls last month. We're still getting a lot of logins on the email attempts, so those are, those are pretty much the same. Had about 252 tickets for a total. 185 of them were me and 67 were Mike. Still, the majority of them are for the county, so, you know, you're getting your bang for your buck there. And then it's been a busy month so far this month. I'm already at about 80 tickets and it's only the morning of the 7th, so that's just me, that's not counting what Mike's got, so. Any questions or anything for me?
I don't have any.
No, I don't have any.
Grandma has her laptop, so she's checking emails and working.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Michael. Michelle, you have some 144s for us this morning?
I need approval to hire. I have two full-time positions open, one due to the employee found better employment with another county and the other I had to terminate. I got a facility officer position open and a field officer position. I'd like to go ahead and do interviews and get that, those people hired.
Oh, you haven't hired?
No.
Oh, okay.
I just want permission to go ahead and hire them. I'm going to the council tonight.
I think we, the only thing we need to do is approve the names to them. Once they're hired.
Once you, yeah.
Yeah, once you.
Before the boards told me to go ahead and hire and then bring the names in so I can get, because I'm running short-handed, we're extremely busy. We have 98 electronic bracelets on, so we're like triple what we were.
Well, we need just to let it go ahead and start the process, I guess. We need permission to do that.
Make a motion?
Yep.
I'll second a motion to allow Michelle to proceed with interviewing. Is there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes.
And the only other thing is the 2018 Dodge Ram truck came in. We got it Friday before last from Reedman's, and it actually came in between about $2,500 less than what their quote was, so we've got it on the road. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Michelle. We might as well take care of that. Warren's not here, but there's a letter that Warren wants to send to Endoc to start the process for, boy, I can't remember. It's the bridge up on Waterloo Road. Bridge 90, I believe it is, isn't it? And he's needing the commissioner's signature on it, so we need a motion to allow Leota to sign this letter.
I'm to sign, have you sign the letter?
Okay. I'll second that. This letter states that that bridge project is estimated cost of $1.925 million. Our 20% share will be in the neighborhood of $385,000 if we get federal funds for that bridge project. Is there any other questions or discussions? All in favor, second to nothing, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Adrian, do you have something for us?
Just a couple things. Finally solved a mystery on the batteries for the people there.
Great.
We lucked out, came out ahead in this. They were referencing a one-year battery, and I measured the voltage to check, we have five-year batteries.
Okay.
So we're good till 2020 on those.
All right. Great.
The only other thing was I'm working with the nursing homes, the high school and the hospital. I'm developing a laptop, or tabletop exercise. They have a, I think, a federal mandate they gotta do this, so they asked me to come in and do that, and anyone's welcome to sit in on it and we'll do it.
Okay. Will you be using the other emergency services?
No, no.
With that tabletop or is that?
No, this is.
Just in-house?
In-house requirements, and then I'll be going around doing some teaching each one on the Instant Command System, so.
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you.
Mark would like to see you sometime talk about the Safety Committee, our next move. The US, or the Geological Society has scheduled us for the first quarter of next year to bring in their Shake House. It simulates an earthquake, and we want to get those nailed down, but sometime in the near future, I'd like to sit down with you and the other people on the committee.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other department heads? Colin, do you have anything? Moving on to old business, we've already taken care of that. The jail healthcare contract, new business, WTH, the proposed Wayne County and Fayette County data exchange agreement. Is there anyone here representing that? This agreement is, if I understand it right, a agreement to, for the two counties to share each other's GIS data. Is there a motion for?
I'll move to approve that. I believe it was no cost to either county.
No, no, there isn't. I'll second it. Is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes. Looks like it takes all three of us to sign. We can sign it while you're. Hold on, hold on. Okay. I've got a phone call to. All right, so we may take a short recess. We'll get everything else done. Bids for 2018 cemetery mowing contract, to open those. We have three bids. Were they advertised open at a certain time of the day or just today?
Does Mr. Caldwell need to look at these today? The charging cemetery?
Do you want to help look at these and look these over? Do you want to help look at these bids and?
We can.
Okay. Make sure that all of it's covered. The first bid is from Cory's Lawn Care and Snow Removal. Would be for $22,500. The second bid is from Lawn and Order LLC. Their bid is for 21, this is kind of an open bid, 21 occurrences and looks to me like 21 weeks at $678 per week. One mulch and two cleanups, fall and spring cleanups at time and materials. So it's kind of an open end bid. Is it this one? McCann Property Management LLC is the third bid. And they have bid per cemetery, it looks like. Shampoo, mulch, orange. That on the bid, we can put them in. These are, this bid is a per cemetery and per mowing. Each cemetery per mowing bid. So that's gonna take a little bit of time. I'm not sure they bid all the cemeteries.
Yeah. We'll have to sort through those, I think.
We'll just take a little advisement for now.
Yeah.
And next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, make sure the, we'll make sure the original bids stay in the auditor's office and she can make, you know, your documents.
Two, so Jane will give us copies then.
Is there a motion to take these under advisement?
I'll move to take these bids under advisement from cemetery.
I'll second it. No, therefore. Met a motion made and seconded to take these bids under advisement pending the cemetery commission's recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get your copies before we leave.
Okay. Is there any other new business to come before us today? Are there any patriot concerns today? Mr. Dyer Riddle? Jump right up there.
Mr. President, how many cemeteries are we talking about and how often are those cemeteries mowed on these bids? Do we know that?
I can't tell you the number. Mr. Caldwell could probably tell you the number of cemeteries that are maintained.
There are about 18.
About 18 that this bid ensues, that takes care of 18 of them and the bid is to have those mowed. How often?
As needed, really. Based on grass length, supposedly, so.
Okay, so if we have a lot of rain, a lot of sunshine, we're might go to be mowing at least once a week.
Yes, sir.
And then when, as the summer progresses, maybe once every two weeks or months, every three weeks on 18 different cemeteries.
We like to stay less than eight inches grass, eight inch high on the ones, because all of these are road access, road accessible.
And where can I get a list of that? Those?
I'll get you those.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hey, no problem. Any other concerns today? We need to take a five-minute recess. I've had, I need to make a phone call before we can proceed with business.
Smash the thing, will you?
We'll be in recess for approximately five minutes. Call the meeting back into session, and I apologize for that, but I wanted to take that phone call before we proceed it with business. We have the veteran service officer appointment that's up today.
And we've got a vote on this, don't we?
Yes.
Need to vote on. We recommended from the board, who met Cambria Sparks for the job. I'll move to appoint her as service officer.
And we want to carry that out till 19, July of 19?
Yeah, we could.
That way.
Give her a chance to.
Yeah, okay. I'll second that motion. Been a motion made and seconded that we appoint Cambria Sparks as our veteran service officer to hold that appointment till July of 2019?
When does, when does she start, actually?
When would you like her to, to start?
Up to the audit groups for payroll?
As soon as she can get in here would be good.
So it works in the?
Yeah, whenever.
And she said that she could start anytime, so then. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Marion, you had a question?
Is Ms. Sparks a veteran?
Yes.
Okay. Will the county please make sure that she gets the proper amount of money, proper amount of funding for schooling? There's a tremendous amount of schooling that she needs to have to make that job be effective for the county.
All right.
Well, a lot of recruiters can't get the job.
Yeah. Most all of it is required, Marion.
And I know, I know it takes her out of the office a lot to get this training, but without this training, it's, it's very ineffective for her to try to do her job.
She has to be trained just to use a computer, just to get into it.
Yeah.
If they don't train, they don't get it.
True, true.
Yeah, to have access to all that data, so.
And, you know, the county veterans officer, in the past, you know, they contribute a lot to this county and bring in a lot of funds for the county, tax refunds for, for the veterans and their families, so very important that she gets proper training. Thank you, Gary.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or? All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes.
Thank you. I'll move to payroll and.
Claims?
Claims.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded that we approve the claims and the payroll that has been presented to us this morning. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes. Is there any other business that to come before us? Does anyone from the audience have any business to come before us today?
We have Indiana Landmarks, a straight-er Weaver property. I've been emailing Leota King about it and wanted to just talk to you guys about it and provide an update.
Okay.
So my name is Michael Flowers. You guys probably spoke to JP Hall before. I work at the Eastern Regional Office for Indiana Landmarks. He has since moved on to a different job at Ball State. We have a new director. She's over there, her name's Jessie Russett. And so I've been emailing Leota about it, and so we just wanted to kind of provide an update on what the, what the plan was. So Indiana Landmarks Board has officially approved everything involved that we need to have involved, so I guess the way, what we're asking for your involvement is the state can't actually donate property directly to a nonprofit, so it has to go through a government entity, and so what we, what we are asking for the county commissioners to stack is a pass-through so that the state Department of Natural Resources would donate it to the Fayette County commissioners, and then they, you guys would donate it to us, and then we would essentially put about $15,000 or so, maybe more money into the exterior of the property, kind of try to stabilize it and do some of the conditions, and then we would look for a suitable buyer. stabilize it and do some of the conditions, and then we would look for a suitable buyer. And of course, we put protective covenants on every property, and so will the Department of Natural Resources, so it'll be a very well-protected property. We financially vet any buyers that come forward for our properties or properties that we get involved in, so that it would make sure that they can do the work, they'd have to have a restoration plan, things like that, and then, you know, get the property in hands of somebody who's going to, you know, update and take care of it and finish out any rehabilitation needs.
I've been approached by the tourism board and asked that we delay this until they can make a presentation to us.
I'll be tabled, too.
Second that. Been a motion made and properly seconded that we table this until we hear from our tourism board on this issue, and is there any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to come before us?
Joey kind of reminded me.
You've already had your turn, Richard.
I know. You mentioned...
This'll cost you.
Cutting a hog in there.
I was bored. Joey mentioned something about, you said something about adding some things to maybe the county auction. We've got a Durango and a Ford pickup down there. The Durango, we don't even use anymore, it's J's. The Ford pickup actually came from up here, was with, I think, Bill had it for a while, and he gave it to us somehow, I don't know, it was way before me, but in the wintertime, we can't use it, because it's just a four-wheel drive. I'd like to look into maybe, I talked to Mark about it the other day, look into maybe getting us a four-wheel drive pickup so we can set it up for subdivisions, but we got two vehicles down there now, and we really don't need any.
And any other equipment that you may start, start making an inventory of that for us?
And our bucket truck, I forgot to mention to you, is, it's about obsolete, our orange one, we can't, we're having issues with Boone one N, so we've been patching it up and stuff, so it's kind of stuck in here if, you know, four-wheel drive or a bucket truck, but we've got the monies and everything out of it for the last two years.
Why don't you get a four-wheel drive bucket truck?
Well, I guess we could do that. I love all that. It'd look funny with a plow on it.
It don't matter if it works.
But I hate seeing him sitting down there, wish we could get something out of him, you know?
Okay, all right.
Just have to think about it.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. Anything else?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes. All right.